Welcome to the Zoom meeting for the Rotary Club in Nordonia Hills. I'm Steve Bajinski, this year's president. Thanks for joining us. Hope everyone's enjoying this first day of December. It's sure coming in like a lion today. Hope everyone likes snow because they have no choice. John, if you could pray for some sunny weather, I'd appreciate it. Could you give us the invocation, John?
Sure, let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, while it's a hard day for some, thank you for the beauty of this first day of a of a big snow. Thank you for the opportunity to let us gather here together. We ask special blessings today for those who work for our school systems and the dangers that they encounter and the challenges that they have. Bless them and give them a spring. Give us the strength, dear Lord, to do, have the courage and and the will to to do the mission that you have for each of us. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, John. If you could pull up the flag, Debbie, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Debbie. Let's introduce some of our guests today. We have Janice Randall. She's with the Rotary Club of Akron and also resident of Sagamore Hills. So thanks for joining us, Janice. We really appreciate it. We also have Amanda Bajinski, my daughter, joining us. And there's my lovely wife Debbie lurking in the background there. Is your grandmother there? So we have an honored guest that trek this snow all the way from West Virginia. We have Mrs. Betty White joining us today from West Virginia. Thanks for joining us, Betty. She happens to be my mother-in-law. I didn't know that I was married to a famous, famous Betty White. Well, there she is. Thanks for joining us, Betty.
Okay, she's camera shy.
Do we have anybody else that we don't see in the camera joining us today? Okay, Casey, I'm glad you joined us today. You took a load off of me as far as day in history. Do you have some day in history for us, Casey?
Sure, I will. I have three things. First, December 1st, 1913, Henry Ford installed this. It is assembly plant. Anybody know what it was? I kind of gave it away there.
Vayor belt.
Yeah, first of all, increased production. It used to take 12 hours to build a car. Now it took one hour and 33 minutes. So there you go. Next thing, December 2nd, 2001, this corporation filed for Chapter 11. It was the largest bankruptcy in the history of the United States. Anybody know what that was? Yeah, it was Enron. And then this one I thought was interesting. John Brown, this was the day that he was put to death for his role in the rebellion. But the interesting thing about John Brown is, you know where his background is from? Where John Brown was? He didn't, he wasn't born here, but he was certainly raised here. Anybody know where that is?
Kent, Ohio.
And that wasn't Kent, closer than that.
He, he, he lived there four years.
Four years, okay. Well, somewhere, someplace even closer.
And he lived in Hudson the rest of the time.
Yep, he lived in Hudson and his, uh, his dad was a, um, author, read through a book, but pretty active in the movement in, in, in Hudson. And, um, and then, of course, he, he left Hudson and became famous for his role in the Underground Railroad. So there you go.
Thanks, Casey. I have one more thing I'd like to add. Today in history, on December 1st, 1955, this black lady had initially seated herself in the black section of the bus. However, when the whites-only session filled up, the driver declared her section was now white and this person refused to give up her seat. Who was the person's name?
Rosa Parks.
Very good, Amanda. It was Rosa Parks. Yep. That's what I have today in history. Thanks, Casey. Okay. We don't have any birthdays as far as Rotary this week. We have a couple in December, but not this week, so I'll save them for a later date. Does anybody have some birthdays that I should know about?
I'll have an extra one.
Oh, yeah, I think we could all use an extra one. The only we get, right?
There it is, backwards. I don't know. I feel like I've aged 20 years this year alone.
Well, I was gonna bring up, uh, Dr. Conklin. Have any humor of the day?
Yes, we do, Steve. A man asked his wife, "What would you do if I won the lottery?" The wife replied, "I'd take half and leave you." "Great," he said. "I won $12. Here's $6. Stay in touch."
This actually happened to my wife a number of years ago. She was playing the sweep the, the magazine lottery. I can't, I'm old. I can't think of the name. Publishers Clearinghouse. Yes. And one day in the mail, there was an envelope with a check in it. And she won $10 in the Publishers Clearinghouse.
Nice.
Nice.
Man, that was news, news leader.
It is newsworthy, but.
Okay, any happy or sad dollars today? I will give a happy dollar. I'm glad my mother-in-law made it to Ohio to visit us real briefly. Thanks for coming in, Betty. And also thank you, Janice, for joining our club meeting. It's very much appreciated. Anybody else? All right, good. At this time, I'd like to introduce our speaker to the, for our meeting today. It's our fellow Rotarian, Joe Clark. Joe, I'll let you give your own little bio and, uh, and he's gonna talk about his new book for us. Thanks for joining us, Joe. Everyone, welcome me joining Joe. Having Joe join us today.
Hey, thank you very much. My bio, I think you probably know. I'm the superintendent at Nordonia Schools. I've been here since, geez, like 2009, I think, 2009. At the end of this year, I will be the longest-serving superintendent in the history of the Nordonia Hills City Schools, believe that or not. And I, I tend to not believe it because everybody tells me how stupid I am, especially on days like these. No, I'm kidding. It's, it's a great place to be. Live here. My neighbor is fantastic, right across the street from, from Steve. Thanks for plowing my driveway this morning, Steve. I appreciate that. And wife Amy and two grown boys. Isaac is 26, Matthew's 22. And so that's me. So I'll talk a little bit about my book. This is my book. If you haven't seen it, it is available on Amazon and Barnes &amp; Noble.com. If the dance floor is empty, change the song. The superintendent's spin on making schools rock, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Or a lot about it in a little bit, but yeah, I, I've always wanted to be a writer or kind of fancied myself as a writer. I, I, in college, was an English major and I had a minor in writing, creative writing, and had to take several courses for that. And in my creative writing courses, we had to write short stories. And I had hoped that maybe one day I'd, I'd make it big. And so when I was in college, I would take my short stories and send them out to various literary magazines to see if somebody would buy one and publish one. And one day I got an acceptance letter. I had, I had already had a stack of rejection letters, but I got an acceptance letter from a small publisher in Pennsylvania. They had a small literary magazine, but I sent them a story they wanted to publish. And they, they said to me, you know, you just make a couple edits, a couple suggestions, and send it back to us. So I got right on it. I made the, the edits, sent it back to them. And of course, this is in the days before, you know, email and that kind of thing. It was all snail mail. And I waited and I waited and I waited and I waited. And about six months later, I got a letter back from them. And the letter said, in essence, this, "Dear Mr. Clark, we regret to tell you that our editor for our magazine was hit by a train and killed. And on his, on his desk was your short story. It was in the inbox, but we have a new editor now and we're going a different direction. So thanks anyway." So it didn't get published. And, you know, I, I often think to myself, well, how, how might my life have been different if that had got, you know, I was 20 years old, maybe. If that had got published, that might have inspired me to continue writing and, and maybe I never would have gone into the world of education, but I did. And I still always, you know, enjoyed writing and I, and I do that. And writing is like a real kind of personal thing for me. As I'm writing, I don't want anybody to read over my shoulder. I don't even like to share it until it's completely done. You know, I don't even like to share drafts with people. But turns out that a few years ago, I started a blog because a lot of superintendents were doing that. So I was writing a lot of stories about experiences that I had, and then I would put an educational twist on them. And one of the very first blogs that I had written was this, was all about this idea of, if the dance floor is empty, change the song. Some of you might know that I spent about 20 years or so, I mean, 24 years as a mobile disc jockey. I did a lot of weddings, parties, school dances. I, my claim to fame, claim to fame is I DJed LeBron James's graduation party and I, I DJed a party for John Elway when he got to the Hall of Fame and Dan Marino when he got to the Hall of Fame. And then I did a whole bunch of just school dances and weddings and stuff. And, and what I, you know, when I first started DJing, what I would notice in myself is that if I was at a gig playing and nobody was on the dance floor, I'd kind of blame the audience, you know, this crowd's horrible. Why aren't they dancing? They're so boring. And then, as I got more experience, I came to realize that it's my fault, right? I'm the DJ. I'm the one that's supposed to get people dancing. And so if the dance floor is empty, change the song. So to, to be more engaging. And the twist on education is this, is that, you know, when you're a teacher and your kids aren't engaging in their lesson, you can blame the kids or you can change the song and you can do something different in education. If you're a principal and you're having a faculty meeting and all the teachers are reading the newspaper, that's not their issue. That's your issue. If, if I'm a superintendent and the community's not listening, we always have to change the song because that's all we can control. So that was just, I just wrote a blog about that and it was well-received. So I just, I kept blogging and blogging and writing several blogs. And I got to the point where people started saying, boy, you're, you know, you're pretty interesting. You should put those in a book. And so I, I thought that might be a good idea. And I put it aside, you know, a couple of years later, there was a day much like today, one of these snow days. And it was actually a day that the weather was supposed to get really, really bad at like 8:00 in the morning. It was a morning where we woke up and it was probably 50 degrees, but by 8 o'clock, it was supposed to have dropped to 30. And we were supposed to get 10 inches of snow during the day. And so the superintendents are all calling each other, trying to figure out, what are we gonna do? How can I possibly call a snow day when it's 50 degrees outside? But if I don't and the, and the snow comes in and, and kids are trapped at school, I'll look like an idiot. And so we're, you know, we're just laughing with each other, superintendents. We, we do that. And so, so after that day, I sat down and I tried to put into a visual what I was going through. And you're not gonna be able to read this, but I want to give you just an idea of what it looked like. If I can even find the page. Should have marked it. And I did it on Microsoft Word. Okay, so we have great editors. So on Microsoft Word, I drew this little picture, you know, and it's like, it's just a Venn diagram, you know, and the options are, you know, the weather stays good, the weather stays bad, school stays open, school stays closed. And depending on where you fall in that, you could be, you could be a a stable genius, or you could be a super idiot, depending on what, what decision you make and how things turn out. And I shared it with my superintendent friends and they chuckled a little bit. They're like, oh, that's pretty funny. And so I thought, you know, oh, this is fun. I'm gonna make some more of these. So I made lots of different charts and graphs and calendars, like right next to it is the one. This is the superintendent's, what can't you do and what must you do? Well, what can't you do? You can't flip somebody off when you're driving as a superintendent because it might be one of your parents. What must you do? Anytime a kid says, you know, I'm selling something for ban, you have to buy it. That's just what you have to do, right? There's much do's and can't do. So I made a list and I shared it with the superintendent friends and they got a laugh. So I, again, I was just in a creative spree. So I sat down and I put like 50 of those things together. I created these. And then I got the idea, okay, I've got a whole bunch of blog entries and I got a whole bunch of these, like not cartoons, but just like diagrams or designs or whatever they are in pictures. And I kind of shuffled them together and I sent it off to a publisher. And lo and behold, the publisher said, we love it. In fact, we think it's almost ready to be printed as it is. It's fantastic. We really enjoy it. And so that was, was last year. This year's 2019. So it must have been 2018, the spring of 2018, when they said, we're gonna buy this thing. And I said, fantastic. They said, it's so good. It'll probably be five months. It'll be out to print. And so we started going through the steps. They designed the cover. They gave it to the editors and the editors read through it. And, and this is the, the great thing about my, my publisher is this. They allow you complete control over what your book is. They say, if you don't like the editor's idea, you can tell them no. If you want a certain cover and they want something else, you can tell them no. And you retain ownership of everything. So you had a really, a lot of creative license. Well, the editor said, you know what? Your book's great. We think it would be better if, you know, we noticed as we were reading a lot of your blogs that they had different themes. A lot of your blogs were written for teachers. A lot of your blogs were written for principals. A lot were written for just leadership lessons in general. That could be for anybody. A lot were written just about how to live your life, you know? We think that if we, if we were to organize these, instead of just being like a, a page after a page, kind of like, you know, if all I ever needed to learn, I learned in kindergarten, if you've ever read that, it's just, you know, a page or two and it's a next, another page to. We could actually put these into chapters and we think it would flow better. And, you know, I had, I had the discretion to go against them, but I thought, I'm, why would I do that? These guys have been doing it forever and I'm gonna trust their judgment. And so that's what we did. And so in the process, I ended up, after we organized it in the, in the chapters, I ended up adding a whole lot of content as they recommended. So that five months turned into over a year. It's like a year and three months before we finally got the final product down and it came out last July 20th. And, and so since then, you know, it's been for sale on Amazon and I've talked a little bit about it. But really, this book is, it's written by an educator for educators, but I've had non-educators who have read it, who have enjoyed it as well. Because there's a lot of just, first of all, insights into the world of education, but also a whole bunch of stuff just about life in general and how you should treat people and how you should interact with people, you know, how you should, you know, be thankful for your gifts and all that kind of thing. So that's kind of what the book's all about. And I think that's really all that I have prepared to say. So I'm, I'm more than happy to take whatever questions you might have. Or the process or whatever you want.
Now, I wanted to tell you, I, I read the book and it was very good. It was very entertaining and I, anybody who lives in Nordonia, who may or may not currently have kids in school, would appreciate all the stories that you took, even though that, some of those stories were before you were here. Some of us were here and they were very accurate and I thought it was very good. A very good read. So congratulations on doing such a nice job.
Appreciate it.
I haven't read the book yet, but I'm certainly going to. It sounds like a lot of stuff you put in the book fits in as a Rotarian. Is that true, Joe?
I, I, I think so. You know, I, I mean, you guys know, you've known me for several years right now and, and I've got several of my coworkers on here, so they will tell you if I'm lying. But what I, what I really, I, I really do focus on this whole idea about not having ego, about admitting mistakes, about just doing the right thing. And we'll say often, when we're in meetings and we're stewing over a decision, we will say, listen, what, we are going to do the right thing. We are likely going to get criticized for this decision, but it's the right thing and that's what we're gonna do. And a lot of those lessons come through in this. And I think, even though that's not the four-way test, it's kind of the four-way test, you know, just being, having integrity and doing what's right.
Right.
And Joe, when you said you sent your book to the publishers, in what format did you send that?
I sent it as a PDF attachment to an email. This is, I, I could, let me tell you a little bit about how I came to meet these publishers and whatnot. And I tell this story in the book too. You know, back in, you might remember that back around when I came to the district, we were in the middle of a levy campaign and we had, we had actually lost four levies before we finally passed the levy. And in that time, we were cutting jobs. We cut 130 jobs. People might not remember that. And it got to the point where I was seeing letters to the editor where people were saying, anybody who has an assistant in their title should be fired. Well, I was the assistant superintendent at that time and I thought, I don't want to lose my job. So I decided I'm gonna start a Twitter account. And on my Twitter account, I'm just gonna tweet all the stuff that I do so people can see that I actually have work that I do, that it's not just a title. And I did that with the sole intention of keeping my position. Well, it didn't work. When Wayne left and I became superintendent, they did not replace the assistant superintendent. I continued to do that office, the HR stuff, in addition to being superintendent. But what Twitter did was it, it helped me meet a whole lot of really great educators across the country. And I happened to went to a conference in Chicago one time where these names won't mean anything to you unless you're an educator. I'm sitting at, we went out to some tiny little hole-in-the-wall Mexican restaurant with Jimmy Casas and Dave Burgess and George Curris, which in the education world, they're like, these are big-time names. Well, these guys were all teachers or principals or superintendents. When I was out to dinner with them, all of them have since left the profession and become authors and speakers and all this kind of thing. It's really, really successful people. And the one guy, Dave Burgess, who was a teacher when I met him, now owns this publishing company, Dave Burgess Consulting. He's got his house in San Diego and his house in Hawaii. He's published more than 90 books now. And I know what they get with, with the, whatever they're called, the royalties. He's doing pretty good, you know, because he's published a lot of books. So that's the first person that I sent it to because they are focused completely on books for educators and, and they liked it.
Very interesting. Anybody else have some questions for Joe? Okay. Well, Joe, since you did such a great job, we have this special Rotary mug that, that you have just earned that we will, but you have to stop over and walk through my nice snow-blow driveway to pick it up across the street, so.
Send Frankie over.
I can save on the UPS, Frank.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Joe. You know what? You know, we have a lot of interesting Rotarians, you know, over the past few weeks, we've had Latif, who now I know is Dr. Latif. He was very interesting. He spoke a few weeks ago. Tony Dunlop, I never knew he was a chess coach and he's actually coached state champions. We have a lot of interesting people in our club and we're lucky to have them. In fact, Howard, didn't you write a book too, Howard, that show?
Yeah, I did. Yes. It's on Amazon right now. It's called It's About Time.
There you go.
And it's all about man, it's all about manufacturing, running a plant, but it isn't the way you think. All, in my entire life, I used to know all kinds of people that started their company and they just dissolved. They never made it.
So it's not a happy. Go, John, another lead-for-speaker, another, uh, one of our fellow Rotarians that we'd love to hear more about it. So you'll be getting a, an email from John.
Okay. I could talk about the 600 pages any day.
There you go. We're always looking for speakers and there's nothing better in my, in my opinion than fellow Rotarians to get to know them better. So perfect. Thanks again, Joe. The cup's in waiting here. We'll get it over to you. A few announcements. Thanks to everybody that donated the holiday gift cards. We actually received enough that we have enough for, well, we got $1,200 worth of cards in. So we'll be distributing for Christmas too. So thanks again for everyone that donated the cards. We have our dictionaries in. Here we go. We got our dictionaries for third graders that will be distributing soon. I got the label made up for it that we're gonna be putting in. We have, I forget how many of these dictionaries. We have like 300 of them that we need to get labeled. So anybody that wants to donate a little bit of time and pick up a couple cases and label these, it'd be appreciated. Just drop me an email and I'll get you a couple cases to label. Otherwise, I'll just get them all labeled. I'll get Amanda and my other daughter to label them. But let me know if you want to help out with that. We need some volunteers for the bell ringing. So far, we got five people that had volunteered. I need five more people. Otherwise, I'm gonna be out there for seven hours and I don't want to be out there for seven hours. So so far, we have the 1:00 through 7:00 slots open. As discussed before, we can only do it for an hour at a time. There, there's a we can't have more than two people out there this year. So what we've been trying to do is get one person to do one hour at a time. So please drop an email to me. The signup sheets online. Debbie has forwarded it to you once. I forwarded it again yesterday. Please sign up and let me know who can help out. And if you want to, let me know right now. Just voice your, your signup and I'll put you on the list. That's gonna be this Saturday, December 5th. So we need some help with that. Next week, our regular speaker will be fellow Rotarian, Michael Wolf. He's gonna be talking about his campus life. Also, David, we need to come up with our, all of our officers by December 15th. Is that right? You want me to unmute you?
There we go. Hey, I made it. Yes, I have dropped the ball on that. I need to get out to Joe and Casey and get that list out. I'll try to have that out tomorrow, Joe and Casey, so we can fill those slots and we'll have that to you next week.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll look for that then. Another question I had for you, Casey, is, you know, usually every year we have the choir, the choir, Nordonia Choir sing for us. Of course, we can't have that this year. Is there any way with, are they doing any performances that we could do some kind of Zoom thing or anything?
So they're gonna do a recording here next week and then I'll see, we're working with Community Focus to video it. And so maybe if I can get a hold of that, we can play it here. And so they have, that would be perfect because I know we do have an opening the week before Christmas. I thought, I don't have my, let's see, what date would that be? What, Tuesday?
Good job.
December 15th?
Yeah, yeah, that would be December 15th. Yep. So yeah, so that would be cool. If we could have a Zoom meeting and we could play that recording of the choir, we could keep that tradition going. Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Perfect. That'd be perfect.
Thanks, Casey.
And don't forget about our reverse raffle. That's gonna be February 6th, whether we do it in person or Zoom. Plan on the date. That's, that's gonna happen some way somehow. Our next board meeting's going to be December 18th, so plan on that. And I think that is it. Does anybody else have anything to add that I may have forgotten? Does anybody else have anything to add that I may have forgotten?
Well, since this afternoon, not many people are doing anything. I thought we could all meet up at Safety Town and put up storefronts.
You know, I have that on the list and I skipped over by mistake.
That's all right.
Yeah. So Dave and I are gonna be at Rushwood at about three o'clock today.
Wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Invoked the four-way test on that one.
You'll be there too, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, Bill. You're gonna be there too.
Put on your thermals.
Actually regarding Safety Town, I will be giving our friends at Kimpton a call today because I want to talk to them. Uh, last year, uh, John reminded me that with the dictionaries, uh, we gave the kids bookmarksers and had the four-way test on and, and a few other things. And Kimpton printed that up for us last year. Uh, so I'm gonna be giving our friends at Kimpton a call today to see, uh, if they can do that for us again this year. And, uh, and I'll get a list of whatever he's gotten done right now as far as the storefronts and signs. And, uh, yeah, we'll definitely look for a better day to, to have a little work party at Rushwood. So thanks for bringing that up, Dave. Anything else that anyone would like to add? Oh, and I see, uh, Bruce Berry just jumped in to join us. Hi Bruce, thanks for joining us.
Uh, glad to. Again, it's tough being two places at once, uh, but Bedford had a, had a nice meeting as well. So at least I don't have to drive twenty miles between the two. So that this somewhat convenient to be in two places almost at once.
Right, right. Well, thanks for joining us. Unfortunately, we're, we are wrapping up a little bit early today.
That's okay. It's good to see that you guys are still, uh, up and about and, uh, the snow didn't get, uh, uh, too many people, uh, from showing up to the meeting today. So that's good.
Hey Bruce, I understand that you have the, uh, district directories. Is that true?
I do. And, um, I'm going to be, uh, uh, trying to work with, um, uh, Steve and the other clubs as to arranging for a, uh, a, a drop-off. Uh, socially distanced, of course, whether it's your office, a parking lot, a McDonald's, uh, I'll be in touch with you, uh, this week to get something set up.
Good. Thanks Bruce.
You're welcome, John.
So anybody that wants a district directory, let me know, but I'll be handing them out to all the officers. So they have that.
Yeah, it was nice to see, uh, DG Pat for two minutes, uh, uh, last Wednesday, just before Thanksgiving. She dropped them off to me and, uh, so it gives me a good excuse to, to say hi a little bit more, uh, in person.
Perfect. Sounds great. Just let me know and, uh, we can get together, maybe even here right at SLC. That's specialty lubricants here. So let me know or I can just meet up with you somewhere. We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Perfect. Anything else anybody would like to add? Okay Debbie, if you could pull up the four-way test. Fellow Rotarians, please join me in our four-way test of the things we think, say or do.
And do.
First is at the.
The truth. To all concerned.
Third will have built.
Friendships. Fourth will be beneficial to all concerned.
Thanks again, everybody. And I look forward to, uh, all the requests that want to help out ringing the bell. And speaking of ringing the bell, this meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the snow. Go out, make a snowman.
Have a good week.
Thanks Bruce.